All right, I would like to call to order the Monday, October 21st meeting of the Manona City Council. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Corr?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Groupie?
Here.
Alder Moore?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the amendments of the October 7th?
So moved.
Meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? Alder Moore?
Yeah, on Amendment 2003, just wanted the record to reflect that I was the one that noticed the discrepancy between the 15,000 that was requested by Alder Wood and the 10,000 that was actually requested by the Director of Park and Rec. And it does say in the amendments that the Director of Park and Rec agreed to the 10,000, but it's not reflected in tonight's budget either, that that's been reduced by 5,000.
Anything, Joan, did you get that?
I...
What page is that on, Nancy?
Figure out where to fit that in. I did not state a lot of things that...yeah, I don't...
It's on page five.
It's on page three.
Right, so you wanted me to say that you found the discrepancy.
I just pointed out the discrepancy, and again, my primary point was also that Director Anderson agreed to the 10,000, and that's not reflected in tonight's budget.
This is for the community center design?
The, it's for the, yeah, the community center loading dock design, yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Amendments are approved. There are no appearances, there is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda. I am going to change one item, we're going to move up item G to A under new, or to C under new business, so that Mr. Danielson can leave and not have to stay through our budgets discussion. So, under new business, item 2C, consideration of Resolution 19-10-2376 approving a proposal from Accurate Appraisal LLC for services related to the assessment of properties put forth by the city administrator.
Thank you. In page 33, your packet starts a memo and then the draft resolution for approval of a proposal from Accurate Appraisals for our next cycle of appraising services. At the Personal Finance Committee meeting that preceded this meeting, the committee members asked Mr. Danielson a couple of questions about how their firm does commercial valuations and how the full value program would work compared to the walkthrough that we had in the previous contract cycle. Based upon Personal Finance Committee meeting at the last meeting, in this meeting, I'm comfortable putting forward to you a resolution for approval for Accurate Appraisals for that four-year contract. Again, we'd be doing the full value program, which does not have the 25% walkthrough, because we just did that in our last two contract cycles, and we can take this year kind of off from that and then just kind of normalize the values through the full value program. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have. Otherwise, Mr. Danielson is also here if you have any questions about how Accurate does their appraising work.
Alder Moore?
So does that mean, since this is a four-year contract, not a two-year contract, does that mean that there won't be any walkthroughs for all four years?
Yeah.
And that's still sufficient?
Yep, because we'll still be changing the value based upon sales in the market, but we just won't be doing the interior walkthroughs in this four-year of the contract.
Except you will do walkthroughs.
If there's...
Where there have been additions or remodeling.
Building permits have been pulled or demos, anything that triggers something, but we won't be doing any kind of blanket 25% walkthroughs.
Alder Kitzler, did you have?
No, I was just going to point that out.
Any other questions? We're not voting on this till two weeks from now, but does anyone know, anything else, or anything for Mr. Danielson? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to unfinished business, item 1A, consideration of Resolution 19-10-2374 approving the 2020 through 2024 capital improvements program and 2020 capital borrowing. We have nine amendments, I think, tonight, which we'll be taking individually. So, first amendment is number 2001, to add 4,500 for police furniture, put forth by Alder Wood.
So I think, I ask the clerk if this is right, I think we need a motion on the overall, and then do the amendments.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the entire budget?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve Amendment 2001?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Alder Wood?
So we did talk about this at the last meeting, and had represented you some of the department here. I don't know if the chief has any comments that you wanted to add. This was one of the requests in your original, or the budget that the committee passed?
I think the two lieutenants summed it up.
Okay.
Last time, if you have questions I could talk about.
Does anyone have any questions? I guess Chief, if you wouldn't mind going up to the podium. Alder Groupie?
So, I've seen the original proposal, but I think just for the sake of clarification, I think that the two officers and lieutenant who were here last time didn't know exactly what, you know, where in the public safety building this furniture was going to go. Can you give just a more specific picture of what specifically you're going to be replacing?
Well, the picture in the proposal is actually in my office. We've replaced all the office furniture over the last probably 15 years for the detectives, the patrolman, the court clerk, dispatch, I'm probably forgetting one, but there's, my office and the two lieutenants' offices haven't been touched in probably 40 years. The stuff's falling apart. I mean, if there's, if there's a, if there's something on the horizon to tell us that something's going to happen in the next couple of years, I suppose we don't need this furniture. But we're not getting any really good signals on that, and so I think we just have to start replacing things. I mean, I've intentionally not put in replacing ceiling tiles, or patching floors, or replacing carpet or painting, but the building's falling apart. And just, you know, when we do these offices, it would be the furniture, the carpet, and painting, one at a time, just to start knocking things off and fixing things up, because the place looks like, you know, I don't want to say TV, but it looks really bad.
And as I've said, Administrator Gatto and I are working on this. I know you have, we plan to give you a report once we're through with the budget in early December. We are actively working on this, on the public safety building. So that was the reason I pulled it out, because I do anticipate something happening within the next couple of years, and thought it made more sense to do all this with the new building. But that's all I'm going to say now in open session, so. Alder Kitzler?
I don't know, you just said that last sentence, but if you're able to comment, would it be a situation, and I'm just weighing it, if it's going to be five years until, you know, the chief moves into a new office, you know, I'm more supportive of this. Is there a timeline that you're thinking or want to comment on?
I don't think it would be five years. No.
I don't think so either.
It'd be longer.
No, it would be less. But obviously, we don't have a definite promise right now, but I would certainly hope it's less than five years. Alder Thomas?
Is there any reason why this furniture couldn't be moved or used in another place?
Well, we're also talking painting and carpet replacement and things like that as well. Correct, is that what you...
Yeah, as we've redone offices in the past, we've spruced them up and replaced carpet, but, you know, that should be routine maintenance that's not being done in that building, too. And if it's five years, this guy won't be here, so.
Well, why don't you have a new guess before you go? It's up to you folks. I was just looking for savings, so.
But my guess is the soonest it could be is three years.
Probably.
That they could move in.
Three's reasonable.
Two, yeah, three's probably reasonable.
So therefore, the question would be, if it was three years, are there pieces of it that you wouldn't, you could still get the furniture, but you might not do all of it, or?
Sure, I mean, we could, we could do something.
So how much money do you want if you have to put, well, yes, to put you on the spot.
We could probably cut 1,000 off and still put some sort of improvement in that office.
So, does someone want to make a...
Are the makers of the motion willing to cut it to 35?
Alder Kitzler?
I was just going to say, keep it where it's at, and then disperse it amongst two offices, you know, what you can get for that. You know, improve multiple offices with furniture, you know, maybe skip the painters, I don't know, whatever. I'm not the one, but, so I'm more for just keeping it as is and letting you use your discretion and...
An equitable approach.
Yeah, I would rather keep it as it is, I guess. It's $1,000, so it's a pretty small change in the grand scheme of the budget, but, I mean, I'm assuming that even after we build a public safety building, this furniture could be, could be used in that building, which is going to stay, or if it can't be used in the new building, and that it's going to need carpet and paint anyway, so.
Alder Moore?
All right, I, just to echo what Alder Wood was saying, I mean, even if the police were to move out in three years, it's not like that portion of the building's going to get torn down. We're still going to be needing to use it for something.
We will, we do anticipate remodeling the interior of that part of the building, so it might not be the same, but...
Right, right.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next item 20, thank you, Ollie.
Thank you.
Item 20-2, increase flood restoration from 10,000 to 25,000, the amount requested by the parks board, put forth by Alder Wood. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
So we, we did, well, we talked about this also at the last meeting. We, there
was a little bit of discussion tonight from the finance director regarding FEMA and how that money might be used for part of this, or dovetail those two.
Mark, would you like to come up to the podium? And this is the first I've heard there, that we did hear about money from FEMA, so how much...
Yeah, I got some notification last week.
Okay. And how much is targeted for parks?
Was it being 25, there was three of them, I don't remember.
Between 2025 for 2020, and for 2021, around 48,000.
Yeah, 48,000. So around 48,000, it has to be for certain parks, so it has to be for Schlueter.
That's 2021, Dan said.
Yeah.
So 20...
He said some was 2020 and some was 2021.
No, right now, we have, the smaller items at the various parks, we have until, I think, June of 2020 to get that work done. That's between 20 and 25,000. 2021, the larger parks like Schlueter Park, I think two other locations, that is up to around 48 grand, but we'll have to budget for that this time next year to do the 2021 work.
So do we have to match the money for 2020? And is that for the same parks that this is targeted?
No. We, we, I think we, our contribution already is in there.
Oh, okay.
I'll have to verify that for you, though. I know the FEMA reimbursements that we are getting for disposal and materials, our contribution's already in there.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's the same way for the parks.
It is, it is.
And is...
The sooner you get it done, the sooner you don't lose the money, too.
So is what's, what's targeted for 2020, is it, which parks are included?
I think there's five parks. I don't know them all right now, but we, we're going to request an extension for 2020, so we can get all the work done, I think, by the end of summer. We have to order the vegetative mat. That takes about six months to grow, so that's why we're going to request that extension. I can get you that list of parks tomorrow, Mayor.
Alder Thomas?
Yes, any of the money that we're getting from FEMA cover the targeted areas in this amendment?
I don't know.
Which are Burchaven, Graham, and Tecumseh, and the west side of One Oak.
Those three for sure are in there.
Those, they're already, so is this a duplication, or is this a complementary?
Well, I think no, it'd be complementary.
We got to front it before we get it.
Okay.
So we may get the, we need to, we need to budget it, but we may get some of all of it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Is this enough?
That should be enough for next year.
So really, this amendment is, has been switched to a different purpose?
Well, it's the same purpose.
It's the same purpose, it's just, it's defined.
We didn't, did we originally put the money in there with the idea of matching the FEMA money? This is the first I've heard of that.
We didn't know. We didn't know. But with FEMA, I mean, we were just alerted last week of what we're getting.
Okay, yeah.
But this money should cover what we have to do.
But now it turns out that this money will be adequate to cover the FEMA thing, and we might get it reimbursed.
Yeah, and we have to do specifically what it says in the FEMA document. We can't use the money for anything else, otherwise we won't get it.
So we do have a plan?
Yes.
Which I think that was a question last week, too.
Yep.
If there's a plan. Any other questions? Alder Kitzler?
So, two weeks ago, we were talking about just restoring the properties, and there was a lot of discussion around a plan or no plan. And, you know, I think Alder Thomas, maybe, not to put words in her mouth, said, you know, we want to make sure we're doing this properly, and making sure we're shoring up the shoreline, making sure we're not flooding other properties by raising certain things up. I guess my point is I want to make sure we're doing this appropriately and correctly, and not just rushing to get something done to use FEMA money. If FEMA money just makes grass back there grow again, that's one thing, but I don't want this money to be used for just putting grass that's going to be flooded again, and I think I said the same thing last time. So I just want to make sure if we're actually budgeting, because this is coming out of the general fund anyways, so, you know, whether we budget this or not, it's coming out of the general fund, paying for it, and hopefully we're getting reimbursed from FEMA.
The 2020 work is more minor work. The stuff we have to do for 2021, I believe, is more detailed work.
Yeah. Is that, now is that detailed work in the same parks as these three?
No, I think they're different parks, well, different locations.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't have that information right now, as far as what we have to do where, but it's in the FEMA documents that we have.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just battling kind of commentarily in my head.
It is going to be minor work.
What was that?
It is going to be minor work. It's going to be restoration of grass, adding some riprap, beefing up the shorelines, things like that.
Yeah.
It's not going to be birmingham up properties for 2020. It's going to be repairing, repairing damage.
Alder Moore?
So, because I'm a little foggy still, so what you're, what I think I hear you saying is that you've got the FEMA money, and that this money, because it's a reimbursement thing, that this money will actually be used to do the work, and then assuming that the FEMA money then comes in, because you do what the FEMA grant tells you you should do, we'll get this money back to go into the general fund, because we don't need any more than 25,000?
That's the plan, yep. We have deadlines to meet, though, so.
But when we originally talked about this amendment, we weren't talking about it covering the FEMA money?
We didn't know if we were getting any money for that, at that point, last week.
Right, and I get that, I get that. I'm just saying, so does this cover what Jake was planning on doing, or is there, I mean, last week it sounded like there wasn't really a plan, exact plan of what you were doing each, so it's the same...
The damaged areas, and what we can do within the confines of permits and...
This is repair work.
I think, I think what Jake wanted to do, the two-year plan, gets you there, especially the work that we were, that we're planning for 2021 with FEMA. I don't know exactly what you're planning for next year, but what's on the FEMA reimbursement document, we specifically have to do. We can't use it for anything else. And I believe that is replanting grass, beefing up the shoreline with bigger riprap, things like that.
So that's what you would have been doing anyway?
Correct.
And is this money then we're borrowing?
No, it's funded.
This is coming from fund balance, okay. Anything else? Okay, Joan, you need to call a roll for this?
Yes.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Moore?
Yes.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Corr?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mark and Dan.
Point of order, since we have a number of these left. My understanding is that for budget amendments, you do not need a roll call.
Is that true? I thought it was, if it was over the 5,000 that we had to...
I think, we've done it either way. I mean, it can be done individually, but you're right, if you want to wait till the end and do a blanket, that would make sense.
So we'll just vote on each one individually, but not have a roll call?
Right.
Okay. Item 20-3, add 15,000 for loading dock design.
Move to approve.
Any questions or discussion?
Yep. Didn't we want to reduce this to $10,000?
Okay, does...
Friendly amendment.
Is that a friendly amendment? That's okay with the two of you? Alder Moore, did you have anything to?
No.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 20-4, increase right-of-way tree replacement from 25,000 to 40,000. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Item 20-5, add $7,300 for bus shelter at Madison Metro Bus Stop near Walmart. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for the record, I know we had a bit of a discussion about this amendment last time about what potential costs could be saved by Public Works doing some of the work that's included in the request. However, in talking to Dan, to Director Stefani, it sounds like asking for the full ballot would be the most appropriate thing, and then if there are savings along the way, we can take advantage of that, so just wanted to offer that as a point of clarification.
Anyone have any other questions about this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 20-6, supply $56,800 from the general fund balance to pay for amendments 2001 through 2005. Is there a motion to approve this?
I would suggest that we wait until the end, until we know what the total is.
We do have another amendment to add.
And do you want to reduce this by the 5,000 that we reduce the...
Right, plus keep it, well, that, the next one we move.
20-9 adds the money for Alder Kitzler's amendment.
Yeah.
From the fund balance.
Well, I mean, we can do it for the first file, I guess. Sure.
So I think we'll need a...
Move approval of 2006 in the amount of $51,800.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 20-7, to install the water meters in one year instead of two years. We had originally hoped to split this between two years, but then Mark learned that we can't really apply for a rate case, that would cover the total amount of the increase, so we need, we will need to do it in one year. And this will be coming out of the utility budget.
Move approval.
A second.
A second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 20-8, to add 15,000 for a B-cycle station at Grand Crossing Park, put forth by Alder Kitzler. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second. Alder Kitzler?
So, since the last meeting, Director Anderson and I had some discussions, he on his own, with some private businesses in the Grand Crossing area, about partnering together, kind of a public-private partnership, to get a Bicycle station situated in that park as kind of a key linchpin on connecting multiple, what do I want to say, multiple bike routes around the lake. I added this, so he's working with actually Trek to get more solid prices. I wanted to propose this amendment so that those businesses that would potentially partner with us, which I think is pretty favorable that they will, saw that the city was in for at least a portion, whether that's 10,000 or 15,000, is yet to be seen, but I know Jake is negotiating that, and maybe he can share a little bit more of what he knows.
Sure. We've had several meetings with B-cycle onsite and at several locations in Manona. Most recently, with the transition to the e-bikes, I think there's a lot of support from both sides on having it there. It's really just at this point of how we can negotiate what that amount is, and in talking with them to have a number of what the city is willing to do. And so my recommendation is we have a one-time offer of up to $15,000 for the installation of B-cycle, and it would be up to the retail business side and Trek or B-cycle to front ongoing cost after that, and any additional costs. So, I think my recommendation is, it seems like there's a lot of support in the community from this council, but we do need to have like, what's our line in the sand type of moment, you know, so we can continue discussing and have a presentation or a proposal.
Alder Wood?
So B-cycle, I mean, Trek owns B-cycle?
Correct.
It just seems like it's an interesting business model to have people pay them to put their business in where you want it.
I think it's, what you're looking at is a tourism draw, and so it's bringing people in from further from where they were starting, that they wouldn't normally do so. So, you know, half the people that are using B-cycle electric bikes that come around the lake into Manona may not have been there if there wasn't a ride-share program, so they may not be seeing all the great things we have to offer in Manona if there wasn't a rental program that they have. That would probably be the pitch from, you know, that type of business model. The only thing I can equate it to is when I was at our national conference in Baltimore, they had all the scooters out there. And so, a lot of fun, by the way, but we were able to extend...
Do you wear a helmet?
No, of course not. I grew up in the 80s, Alder Wood. We don't believe in helmets. We were able to extend the area of the city that we want, you know, that we would walk to normally, and I think, so that's, for businesses, for people visiting our parks, getting exposure to Manona, that's, I guess, what the recommendation for myself and for people that say, yeah, we want it here. It also gives our residents an opportunity to start in Manona, go down around the lake and end in Manona as well.
Alder Thomas?
Because I like to think outside the box, if I stretch this, is this a tourism thing?
Well, that would be my recommendation for the businesses that are looking at how they can negotiate whatever that fee would be. My recommendation is that, at the time being, that the city or Park and Rec does not be requesting funds from the Tourism Commission at this time. In the future, when we can prove a better case, I would say that it may be an avenue, but my recommendation is, is that as we negotiate for the B-cycle, that we're in a one-time investment. Anything above and beyond that would be up to any of the private businesses and B-cycle slash Trek.
Alder Groupie?
First of all, always wear your helmet, Jake. Safety first, everybody. So, just to clarify, we would have a contract that states that this would just be our contribution to installation of the B-cycle stand, and then future maintenance and other costs that I know that are required every year would be covered not by us, and that would be in some sort of contract with the businesses, or what would that look like?
Correct. On any sort of facility use agreement that we would have with B-cycle, those terms and conditions would be included in that agreement.
Isn't the initial install more than 15,000?
It was, it's between 30 and 40, as far as guesstimates that I've had with B-cycle, but again, I think that there's mutual interest on both sides, and there's... and there's other potential partners within that, within the development area, that may be interested in funding this portion of it. But I think all parties need to know, okay, how serious are we? Certainly, I don't think we need to pay for the whole installation and ongoing maintenance for it, but I believe that if there's a commitment from our end for the initial installation, we can start to work out those details with how the other parts are funded.
Did you tell me this is the first one outside of Madison?
Correct. This would be the first one outside city of Madison.
Alder Groupie?
And in the original plans, you had envisioned a place for this, is it still going to be in that predetermined location?
Yeah, absolutely, so that first kind of colored concrete area by where the bubbler and bike repair station is.
Alder Moore?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, just to go to the design again, I just wanted to also remind us that there's a location for not only a Bcycle, but also other bike racks. So this, having that, this bike rack would not preclude there being plenty of regular bike traffic that could lock up to enjoy the park or absolute development.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Final amendment, apply 15,800.
No.
Let's see, it's 15,000, it should be 15,000, is that right?
Yeah, it says it right in the actual numbers, but.
From the general fund balance to pay for amendment 20-08, is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
A second.
Any questions for the discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion passes. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2020 capital budget as amended?
Brady did that.
It's on the table.
We had, I'm sorry, is, okay, so I'll get this eventually. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next item 2B, consideration of, I'm sorry, 2A, consideration of resolution 19-10-2375, approval of the purchase of a Parks and Recreation Truck put forth by the Parks and Recreation Director, and this is started for immediate approval.
Move to take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. This is a 2018 capital budget item, replacement of a truck that qualified for replacement. It's our, kind of a workhorse of our fleet, mobile repair center, hauls our heavy equipment, plows snow in parking lots in the wintertime, plows out paths for access to the lagoon, has a lot of starts and stops with it, so it does take quite a bit of wear and tear. We missed the deadline, or we missed the timing in 2018 with busy season, and then 2019, we had staff change over and kind of missed the, they had a much earlier order deadline. Our full-time park maintenance staff, Dan Kooch, was very resourceful and found that Kaiser Ford on the west side was, actually had bought in some of the same models that we were looking at ordering, and they would honor that state bid price that we'd have. So this would be the chassis, the utility body, which is the storage for all the tools and the equipment right on the truck, and then a new snowplow for it as well. Total is 47,000, 096.
Questions? Alder Groupie?
Just because I want to beat Alder Moore to it, were considerations made for any sort of anti-idling or other sustainable vehicle purchasing throughout this process?
This was approved in the capital budget during 2018. The type of truck that it is, it does not, anti-idling, yes, potentially, we could add on there, but as far as electron, electric or hybrid for that big of a truck and that heavy duty, we're just not there yet. And I believe the earliest, I believe is 2021 for electric work trucks, is what I'm hearing anyway. We have nothing definite, though.
Any other questions? Alder Kitzler?
Are you going to have this in time for this winter?
That, yeah, that's the goal, that's why I'm asking for one reading, and it takes four to six weeks to get the utility body, get it before hopefully any snow flies in December. And then the old truck will be traded in, so actually, there will be money coming back to the city. Mark doesn't like to use the term net on the trade-ins for vehicles, but this would be one that would go to auction.
Any further questions? Hearing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Groupie?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Core?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Jake, you want to just stay up there for a minute? We've already discussed item 2C, so we're on to reports of committees' commissions. Do you have anything to report? Boy, I'm, I think it's because I spent 96 hours with my grandchildren. I'm sorry.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, but you might as well stay up there. Okay, item 2B, consideration of resolution 19-10-2377 approving Grand Crossing as the name of the city park at 6320 Inland Way. Jake?
I forgot about this one, too, that was on the agenda. Okay, so in your packet is the details, including our naming policy that we have, the criteria that the Parks and Recreation Board used in soliciting a name. It's been a long, sometimes painful process of trying to decide what would be the best name for this park. It included a site visit from the board, it included community input, social media requests for naming, and at the end of the day, Alder Wood, to his credit, found some historical references to that part of the Yhara River from Native American culture, Grand Crossing, so it's in two separate publications. That name was unanimously recommended for approval at the Parks and Recreation Board's September 10th meeting. So we had a 30-day public input comment period, and those comments are in your packet. There was an online vote with kind of a final four names, and so there was very similar interest in the name Grand Crossing and Inland Park. But based on the historical references, the Parks and Recreation Board thought it fit most closely with the ideals of the naming policy and the site.
Questions, Alder Moore?
Is it, is it actually going to be Grand Crossing Park, or is it just Grand Crossing?
Just Grand Crossing was what was recommended from the Parks Board.
But the signage will clearly identify it as a city park?
City of Manona Park. So typically, our park signs would say Schluter Park, City of Manona. This one I would envision as approved, and we can get email, you know, viewing from the council before we go off on it. But I would envision it would say City of Mano, a City of Manona Park would be the text underneath Grand Crossing.
Any other questions? Alder Core?
I attended a lecture this last week by someone at the EWE about honoring our native history, and one of the things that they pointed out was, City Vancouver does a lot of signage that includes native language on the signage, and I'm just wondering if we could maybe consider potentially either, maybe not on our park sign, but somewhere within the park, denoting what Grand Crossing would be in Hochunk. We certainly have some connections within the council after our work from the last initiative that we may be able to get that, that language available, so just something to consider, I guess.
Thanks, Alder Core. That actually was a recommendation from one of our university, university projects, is having some of that language listed on signage, or having some educational components within our after-school summer camp program as well. And certainly, I would defer to the mayor and the rest of the council, but it's something I think we can do. We intend to be honoring the history of that area with multicultural celebrations, including Hochunk, you know, in four years as well, is kind of celebrate all the cultures that we have here in Dane County at that site.
Anything else?
Just, yeah.
Alder Wood?
Just so you know, you're not the only person forgetting things, aside from my glasses, I also intended to bring The Making of Manona and the book, A Place Name, Place Names of Dane County with me, and they're at home instead of here, so I'll try to remember to bring those next time. I'm also trying to get ahold of the, there was a reference in The Making of Manona to, that the name Grand Crossing was shown on a map from, I want to say 1836, really early, when like around when it was, would have been surveyed, showing the name on there. Unfortunately, it's not one of them that's available on the Historical Society's digital archives, so I'll have to go down there and get, look at an actual physical map, so.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, and while you're up there, do you have anything to report?
Sure. We're all moving a little slow today after a long fall festival weekend, but thanks to all those that participated, sponsored, volunteered, and especially my staff. We have a really amazing staff that works incredibly hard, puts in a lot of long hours, a lot of attention to detail to kind of make this little community, you know, festival a big weekend. So beautiful weather, good turnout, a lot of fun, and we now roll into our Halloween spooktacular this Friday night. So in Parks and Rec, we love seeing the kids dress up in their costumes, and we'll celebrate at the park as much as we can. So we're really looking forward to that event, and we're looking at end of November for the ice rink at Grand Crossing.
Okay. Okay, we will now go to reports from the council, Alder Thomas?
I have no report except to say I'm leaving on the 24th of California, I'll call in for the next council meeting, but I have to get out there to get the landline number because they never use it. So, and I'll be back on the 10th.
Thank you. Alder Core?
We have the public information meeting for the McKenna Road project tomorrow night at 7:00. I believe we're in the community center.
Is it at 7:00 or 6:00?
6:00.
6:00, okay, 6:00.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Kitzler?
No report.
Alder Groupie?
No report.
Alder Moore?
I just wanted to extend again my thanks to the mayor and to the city staff. We often say here that we like our budgets to reflect our values, and they should reflect our values, and I think, given particularly that we are trying to keep our capital expenditures to very small amounts to make room for exciting changes to come, I just, I just want to applaud staff and the mayor again for presenting what I think was a very tight and appropriate budget.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. City Clerk?
No report, Mayor.
Administrator Gatto?
Just two quick things. One, hopefully, tentatively, this week, Wednesday is the time period where we're going to have the rollout for the city's new refresh of the website. If that date changes or something happens where it's not quite ready for rollout, I'll let you know. But we had some good feedback from members of the Community Media Committee and a couple of comments from Maggie B., who had did our communications study, Maggie Baum, and members of department heads who were more involved in the website. So we think you're going to like what you see, it's got a lot more bold colors and functionality, so we're going to be happy to roll that out here this week, hopefully. And then, just, I think I've mentioned this before, but when we get to 2020, we'll be rolling out a lot of partnerships in social media and kind of information about the coming 2020 census. We, like all communities in the state, recognize the importance of making sure we get as accurate headcount of people in the community as possible, because that does impact our ability to get federal funds for things. So we will be partnering with the library, senior center, and anybody else that you think would be a willing and good partner for us to work with to get information out in the communities so they know when, when we are doing the actual, filling out a forms and things like that after April 1st, that that's something that's legitimate, and it's something that's very important for our community. So more information to come on that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming down the pike here in the next couple of months.
Alder Thomas?
I just have a question. Do we do, or can we do, a reminder to people when they register their vehicles that they register them in Manona? Because that affects our transportation aids?
Something we take a look at, yeah.
Especially businesses as well, who have large vehicles, I mean, the post office doesn't treat us very well because they refer to us as Madison.
Okay. Okay, I just had a couple of things. Brian and I went down and observed the ceremony they had at the state capitol last week, where they recognized the first responder of the year from every assembly district, and Assistant Chief Dan Eckloff was the nominee for the, for our district, and so it was, it was a nice ceremony, and I think Dan was really pleased, and we appreciate all of his efforts for Manona. Is the Bridge Road update, do you want to explain that a little, I'm sure people, I'm getting questions about it.
Sure, we can have more information for the council on this as well, but the, the plan for Bridge Road is, as we're getting towards the end of the asphalt season, we don't want to take the last pass of asphalt that comes out of the plants before they close because it's, you know, probably not the best quality. So our goal is to have a first course of asphalt down over the road, have both lanes open for travel, so that everyone will be able to utilize the road over the winter, and then we'll pick a day in the springtime, once snow and thaw are gone, and then come back and do the final course of asphalt. So road will be usable, it'll be passable sometime in the next couple of weeks, we'll get a date certain year pretty soon, but then we'll come back and finish the project the proper way in the spring.
Any questions about that, Alder Kitzler, and then?
I'm sure smarter people have thought of this question, but I'm just thinking with the additional two-inch depth that the curb and gutter will hit, that when you pass it by with a plow, you're going to get a lot of chipping and nicking, and, and I don't know if then they're just going to taper it for the time being, you know, which may be helpful, but, I don't know. Anyways, that's just a food for thought.
Yeah, good note.
It's a bit of a worry. I'd hate to crack all that good cement.
Alder Core?
I just concern that we make sure that we get this message out, that it's not done, and that this isn't acceptable as done, because I can hear constituents already complaining, so.
Yeah, so I think once it's actually finished, this phase, we should get something out right away. Alder Wood?
I was actually talking to Dan about this, the project, right before the meeting, and he did indicate they would, they would have asphalt tapered up to the edge of the curb, the concrete.
Alder Groupie and Alder Moore?
And sorry, just to clarify, this is the bridge in addition to the rest of Bridge Road that extends just Broadway? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, the bridge will be concrete.
Yeah, the bridge is concrete, so that's not a issue. Alder Moore?
I'm, I'm just curious, given the construction schedule and the rest of the site, development site, is there any, would there be any reason to not put a final course on it even in the spring if we're, if we're going to have construction trucks back in there again?
I mean, it's something we can bring up with them, but I, I think we'd want to finish the, I don't know that we want that binder course to stay exposed to the elements, you know, for a whole year, but that's something we can talk with the, the project team on.
Anyone else? Okay, the only other thing I had was just a reminder that the second meeting of the committee of the whole regarding the operating budget is this Wednesday, beginning at 5:30 in this room. So if there's nothing else, we have no appointments tonight, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. They are adjourned.